It's long term.
Right, so you're gonna have the structural design set there, you know, and then we can have the company get it. Say, yeah, we could put up forty panels, you know. Depends on panels and stuff. Oh, that's not what it's gonna really cost.
We're good.
Yeah. That's gonna be my strategy.
I'm good?
Yeah.
All right, here we go. It's okay. Sorry for the technical difficulties, but we are back. Thank you for your patience out there. We are moving on to Agenda Item Eight, which is our recognitions. Do we have any recognitions this evening? All right, see none, I'll close that portion. Move on to Agenda Item Nine, which is our Franklin High School student representative report. We have Cavins with us, Cavins Merrill with us, who will turn it over, let Cavins tell us what's going on at the high school.
So, our fall sports teams came together for the end of the school season banquet. We all came together for a potluck dinner. Each team brought a different food item, and they were able to share different memories, wins, achievements that occurred over the past few months. Awards and certificates were handed out, and teams were able to bring their family members to celebrate. The senior class of two thousand twenty-four hosted a bonfire dance last Friday. Many students came out to enjoy a nice bonfire with music. We had some groups of students come together and play volleyball and football on the field, which was really good to see, because we were unable to do it, do our homecoming bonfire. And our National Honor Society made a card for veterans, and we placed it out here in the cafeteria, and we encouraged all students to sign their name, to show our appreciations for the veterans. And then that was hand-delivered by the National Honor Society. And that is its for today.
I will tell you that they had an outstanding turnout. I had the privilege, the football coaches and players invited me for the potluck as part of the chain gang that I, that I help out with at the high school here for the football games. So the, the coaches and players sent me an invitation to attend, which I did. And it was probably one of the largest turnout of parents. Dan was here for it, and Danny Sylvester, and all the coaches, and I've attended many them before through here, and this is probably one of the largest turnout of parents that was here for the banquet, the sports banquet, so that was extremely nice to see, so.
Definitely bigger than last year.
What's that?
Definitely bigger.
Definitely bigger than last year, yep. So it was, it was really a tremendous opportunity to see that many parents out here, and it was really a good thing to see, so. And they did put on an outstanding supper that night, so. Kudos to them. All right, Agenda Item Ten, it is our approval of prior board minutes. We have regular board minutes from October sixteenth, and we have our non-public minutes from also October sixteenth. So I'll take a motion on, one at a time on them, please.
I'll make a motion to approve the regular minutes of October sixteenth, twenty-three, as presented.
Okay, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Liz. So motion made by Deb to accept the minutes of October sixteenth, the public meeting, second by Liz. Any discussion or corrections? Seeing none, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstentions? The ayes have it, the public meeting minutes are approved.
I'll make a motion to approve the non-public minutes of October sixteen, as presented.
Okay, motion made by Deb to accept the non-public October sixteen meeting or minutes as presented. Do I have a second? Second by Liz. Any discussion or corrections? Seeing none, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstentions? The ayes have it, the motion passes. Liz. That takes care of our minutes. Move on to Agenda Item Eleven, which is our financial report. I'll turn it over to our business administrator, Jefferson.
Good evening, everybody. As usual, I've uploaded the financial statements to the drive, and hopefully you've had a chance to review those. Since the last board meeting, we have spent and obligated an additional one hundred sixty-two thousand four hundred fifty-seven dollars. This was primarily caused by an anticipated out-of-district residential placement. At this point, we now have just over ninety-six percent of our budget spent or obligated at this time. Our revenues have increased by twenty-eight thousand one hundred and thirty-eight dollars. This is a net amount, which I'll explain why it's a net amount since the last board meeting. Primary increases on our revenues is related to interest on our bank account and are able to start posting our food service claims for federal reimbursement from the state once they finally, after a lot of back-and-forth, approved our national school lunch program One reason why I said net was, we've had a reduction in our revenues related to our special education aid. I know I've spoken to this many times before, special education aid is related to our prior year costs of out-of-district tuition and other things for special education. The reason why we are not getting, I had budgeted one hundred and forty-five thousand dollars for it, and the reason why we are not getting it is because we had a significant reduction last year of the amount of money we spent. They have a very specific formula that is used to determine how much money you get, and it's on a per-child basis, what they call three times the state average, which is this year nineteen thousand nine hundred thirteen dollars, so that threshold comes to just under seventy thousand dollars. And anything above that, it's an eighty-twenty split between the district responsibility and the state's responsibility. The state covers eighty percent of those costs above that seventy thousand dollars. We didn't have any students that qualified based on expenditures last year, so we won't be getting any revenue. It's a good thing, it's a double-edged sword, you know, we don't get the revenue, but it also means we didn't spend that much in the prior year, which is ideally, if we didn't have to spend any money on out-of-district, that would actually help us quite a bit. To give you an idea, two years ago, in fiscal year twenty-two, our out-of-district tuition cost was five hundred and ten thousand dollars. Last year, it was two hundred and forty-four thousand dollars. So it's a significant reduction, over fifty percent reduction in our total costs. This year, for example, right now, we have spent and obligated, doesn't necessarily mean we're gonna spend it yet, but at this point, we're just under five hundred thousand dollars, especially with this new out-of-district placement that was unanticipated, that just occurred in the last few weeks. So again, when I do my budget estimates for next year's budget, then I'll have to look at that to see if I can expect special education aid out of that. The revenues have not yet reflected, it has a budgetary effect, but one thing that actually will offset that is we just had funds approved by the city council for additional adequacy aid and additional fund balance that we recognized once reconciliation was done. That amount was three hundred and seventy-four thousand one hundred and twenty-four dollars, significantly more than one hundred and forty-five thousand dollars. So financially, we're still in very good shape in that respect. Also, other areas of revenue this year, we've already exceeded our budgetary amounts, one being interest on our bank account, because that's, Federal Reserve kept jacking at the rate, so at this point, I can comfortably say we're gonna get at least, at least another fifty thousand plus above budgeted, and most likely more. Charter school aid came in at sixteen thousand dollars more. Our indirect costs related to our grant administrations are also probably gonna end up being higher than our budgetary, and so we have a lot of other pieces within our revenue build that we would actually see more money than we had anticipated, that certainly offset the loss of the special education aid. Another thing that has come out, speaking of adequacy aid, there we go. So we've gotten our estimate now for next year's adequacy aid amount. Based on the preliminary number, it'll probably be level with what we received this year. The reason being is, they revamped the entire formula, added some components, took out some components, but a lot of it's based off of ADM. And ADM, at the end of last year, was at nine hundred and seventeen, because, based off of your, excuse me, nine hundred and four point oh seven, which is your end-of-year ADM or average daily membership of students within the district. The estimate that they're using for our ADM for next year is eight hundred and forty-eight point eight six. That's a reduction of fifty-five point two one. So that's a significant reduction. We've actually recognized in our enrollment reports that we've submitted, that we've had a drop in our enrollment, the district. So actually, I was at a conference today, they were talking about enrollment in the state of New Hampshire. In the last twenty years, it went from over two hundred thousand dollars, two hundred thousand students, excuse me, in ten years, I think it's ten years, two hundred thousand students to one hundred sixty-five thousand students throughout the state of New Hampshire right now. So we have what you call very aging population, it's been a trend for the last two decades. Franklin, who've been kind of stable the last few years, maybe up and down a little bit, but this year, after COVID kind of cleared out, has shown significant change in that, and many things you can point your finger at that would cause that to occur, but I won't get into that. But part of the formula, because of how they rewrote the formula, they have a hold harmless component to it, which means that we won't lose money in that year. And that whole harmless component will continue on for the next ten years, and they will reduce it by twenty percent every other year until it's gone completely. So it'll be a phase-out, similar to what they used to do with a stabilization grant that they had, in effect, in two thousand sixteen, they decided to start dropping it by four percent every year, and then they restated it all back in two thousand eighteen or nineteen, I think it was, or twenty. But stabilization now was completely written out of the formula, and they brought in the extraordinary needs grant, which was more focused towards communities that had high poverty levels, and to help them out as far as per pupil valuation of property, so. We won't know our final number for adequacy aid until, again, October or middle of September of next year, of seven twenty-four, once we've submitted all of our end-of-year enrollment and reports and attendance reports. Yeah, and at this point too, because we might, our enrollment could change quite a bit throughout the year, as we have a significant transient population, so we'll see how that works out. And that is mostly the excitement I had for this evening, so. I know there's a lot of information, but if you have any questions, I'll be willing to answer those.
Any questions for Jefferson? All right. Thanks, Jefferson.
Thank you.
Can I just add one thing real quick?
Sure.
I just want to add that the, the news did come out today, by the way, that
You're gonna take my thunder.
I'm gonna take your thunder. You wanna say it? You want me to say it?
Yeah.
I just think it's important, the fact is, that came out today, that the state of New Hampshire, the ruling from the judge came out, that it's unconstitutional the way we fund education in New Hampshire. That ruling came out this morning.
So I will, as you all, as you all know, I stay up to date on this and testified at many hearings on this. Twenty-five years ago, Claremont decision was made, and it was ruled at that time that the funding, how funding was done in the, in New Hampshire has been unconstitutional and inadequate. Last year, the Kentucky School District, along with seven other school districts, filed suit again against the state of New Hampshire. And the New Hampshire Superior Court in Rockingham County ruled that the current school board amount of base adequacy aid of forty-one hundred dollars is unconstitutional, because it does not reflect the true cost of obligation imposed on local school districts by the state. The court opinioned that the true cost of an adequate education is seven thousand three hundred and fifty-six dollars and one cents per pupil per year, and according to the court, likely much higher than that. Okay? It's a fifty-eight-page decision that I will, I've started reading. But anyways, so I am sure that the state of New Hampshire is going to appeal this decision to the Supreme Court. We will wait again for the Supreme Court to once again rule that the state of New Hampshire continuously fails to properly and adequately fund education, so if this cost of the seventy-three hundred, which is about three, three, a little over three thousand dollars more, it's gonna, you know, the state has gypped the children in the public schools over, over five hundred million dollars. That's what's in the ruling.
That's just for one year.
Yes. Okay, that is part of the ruling that I've read so far. So we'll see where it goes, but it is a victory finally for public schools, that this is where we've been arguing this for many years anyways, that we're not adequately funded, so when this appeal takes place, I will let you know. Any questions on that? All right. We love good news like that. All right, move on to Agenda Item Twelve, which is our committee report, so I'll start with Deb.
First of all, I would like to congratulate the Teachers Association and the Board for negotiating a contract that was approved by the city council unanimously, and we are excited that we're going to be able to give them a little bit more stability. Not top notch, but at least we're going in the right direction. So saying that, we're, a finance committee meeting met November thirteenth. We reviewed our minutes and approved them, and our normal bank reconciliations, our treasurer's reports, student activities reports, and we were updated on the buildings and grounds projects, as you heard from Mike Davies tonight. Our next joint finance committee meeting with the city council is on November twenty-ninth at five-thirty, and our next finance committee meeting is December fourteenth at five o'clock here at the SAU conference room.
Any questions for Deb? Thank you, Deb. We'll move on to Delaney, I know he has an I-two for us.
Thank you. We had an innovation and improvement committee meeting on November first. Our main agenda items were working on the strategic plan, which we will be reviewing as a board tonight, and a little bit of work on state assessment data, which we'll also be reviewing here tonight. Our next meeting is December sixth at five o'clock at the SAU conference room, and we will be doing final markups of the strategic plan to bring back to the full board for a vote in December.
Any questions for Delaney? I know Liz had a, attended a, because Maureen's not here tonight.
You had a policy meeting.
No, that, yeah, that was, we did the, we did the, I stayed for one, and it was Maureen and Chrissy.
Maureen and Christie, okay. So they did have a, I'm sorry. Maureen and Christie. I thought you were there too. I wasn't there, so. But anyways, we had a policy meeting, they got halfway through the fall updates from NH, New Hampshire School Board Association, so you'll see that in our first readings tonight. So we have another one December fourteenth, is that what it was?
December fifth.
December fifth.
Yeah.
To review the second half of the policies, so we will, after that, we will have the fall updates completed on the policy. All right, any other committee updates, committee reports? Seeing none, I'll close that. I'll turn it on to Agenda Item Thirteen, which is new business. The new business is always an update from our superintendent, so I'll turn it over to Dan.
Hey, Tim? So our first item is the strategic plan. We have gotten it to a, what we're calling now a final draft, that was in the board folder. Want to give a shout-out to Carissa Coro for putting this all together for the administration. She's been working very closely with us. The I-two team has taken the lead on this, and has been giving feedback on this every month. As Delaney said, we are looking to bring this back to I-two with any kind of feedback, constructive feedback that the full board has tonight, so that the I-two team can make some last-minute tweaks and adjustments, and then bring it to the full board next month for approval, so we can get moving on this work in, starting in January. So I hope you had a chance to look through it. There's two sections to the strategic plan, one is kind of the forward-facing piece, where we talk about all the goals from our core values, which have remained the same from the original strategic plan, and then we have the nuts and, what I call the nuts and bolts, which is the specific action items, and what are the specific things we're gonna be doing over the next three, three and a half years. So welcome to any feedback or comments that anybody has, so we can kind of incorporate that last-minute feedback into our I-two meeting next month, and bring it back to you, hopefully signed, sealed, and delivered in December.
Are there any questions for Dan on strategic, on the strategic plan? All right. Since there isn't, if you come up with one between now and December sixth, please forward that to, to the superintendent so that he can bring it up at I-two.
Yep, sounds good. All right, great. State assessment system data review. So in the board folder, I put a, comes an Excel spreadsheet in there regarding the latest round of SAS testing. We put it in a cohort view for you, so you have a better understanding of how to read the data. So the data reads from left to right. Once again, the I-two committee has been working on this for the last couple of months to kind of put it in a format that would be easier for the, the group to read. We have some mixed results at all three schools. We are still going to be identified at the elementary and middle school as comprehensive support instructional schools. That designation is continuing. I'll remind you, that means that we are performing in the bottom five percent of Title One schools in the state of New Hampshire. And the high school is continuing as a targeted improvement school, based on these latest results at the high school level. So each year, the schools that get chosen by the test results get identified, and we develop plans. Interestingly enough, the system that the state uses this time around, the plan wasn't developed until after we took the next round of tests. So this is not a fast, quick, easy process to, to navigate. But each school has their improvement plans, is moving forward with their improvement plans, and making good progress. Our next, next round of testing will begin in March with the writing test at the middle school, and we obviously have the SATs at the high school, and then we have
Paul Smith.
And Paul Smith, yeah.
Paul Smith, that's right.
And then we have the SAS testing that will occur next spring at the elementary and middle school. Other than that, we are moving forward with all of our improvement efforts, and we'll keep doing what we need to do to try and improve those scores, and try to get off this comprehensive support list. If I can take any questions, if anyone has any questions about what they're looking at. Okay, moving forward. I have a resignation tonight, I'd like the board to accept the resignation of Alex Kendall, Library Media Specialist.
I make a motion to accept the resignation of Alex Kendall, Library Media Specialist, with regards.
Motion made to accept the resignation as presented by the superintendent, do I have a second? Second by Delaney. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor of the motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstentions? The motion passes.
Thank you. I have two nominations tonight. One is for Dave Pollak. He is a high school science teacher, and the other is a part-time English as a Second Language teacher, Brandy Drinkwine.
We'll take a motion for those nominations, please. Brandy. Motion's been made by Liz to accept, to accept the nominations as was presented by the superintendent, do I have a second? Second by Desiree. Any discussion? Seeing no discussion, all in favor of the motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstentions? The ayes have it, the motion passes.
Thank you very much. Okay, in the board folder was the Hewitt Technical Center Regional Agreement. This is a new process. Tim and I are on that committee that meets quarterly. Typically, it's been a ten-year process, and then we would look at this document every ten years, that's changed down to every four years. So this is a new draft document that you are looking at. What I need the board to do tonight is to authorize Tim to sign off in agreement with the four-year agreement with the Hewitt Center, so that he's able to sign off as one of the sending districts.
To give you a little heads-up on it, the only, there's only a couple of changes that's been done in this agreement. There's some, there were some legislative changes, okay, that took place, they got passed. There's no financial burden upon the school district with this. The changes are that the sending school districts all have to work together to coordinate their schedules, so that our kids can have the maximum amount of time over at Hewitt, okay, which is necessary, okay? And in any calendar year, we can only have ten days, totally, with all the sending school districts, we only have ten days that don't align up with one another. So you may have some tests, or, you know, SATs if they have during the day, or winter carnival, or homecoming, you know, all the schools have it, so, but legislation says you can only have ten, okay? So that was one of the things that changed in the legislative update. And a lot of the wording of Department of Education was taken out of the agreement. It put back into local control, as it should. Okay, so all of, all of the wording of dealing with the New Hampshire DOE has been taken away. What happens is, the only thing we have to show them is that the sending districts, their boards either reviewed it, or authorized the chairman of the board to sign off on it, we just send it down, we have to send it to DOE saying, here's, we have a four-year plan, and it's been all signed off by our school board members, and all is good. Okay, so financially and all that stuff, there were, there were no changes to it, okay? They wanted to get this done in a fairly quickly, quick manner, just because we want to get it over with and start it in January with our four-year plan. But, you know, a few years back, we did sign the ten-year plan for those members who may remember, so there is no changes to it, it's just a matter of some wording was changed, and some laws that have to, had to be added in there were, were done. So we don't lose any seats at Hewitt, we continue having the same maximum amount of seats based on our population, okay? So if there's any questions, I'll try to answer them for you. Liz?
I did see, so reading through, it didn't look like, did it look like there was a process for how the sending districts were meant to coordinate? Do the chair people of the districts have a plan in place that has to be recommended?
Yes. For what's gonna happen For what's going to happen, you talked for scheduling?
Yes.
Yeah, the superintendents meet. So the superintendents of the sending districts meet and coordinate the schedules, okay? And then the superintendents then, because all the superintendents attend, you know, at the, as part of the regional, so all the sending superintendents do, are there for it too, okay? And then they are going to coordinate, okay, Franklin can't be here this day, Winter Squam can't be here this day, Shaker Regional may not be able to be this day, Newfoundland's here, so they will coordinate that and all that comes back to the regional board. And once that comes back to the regional board, then the regional board will vote and approve that, so.
We align our calendar list to Laconia because of this. So we meet monthly, the regional superintendents meet monthly, and it follows all of that calendar back and forth. And we all wait for Laconia to get theirs passed and then we work from it. So when I bring the calendar to you, probably in January is when I'll bring the next year's calendar, it's because we waited for Laconia to pass their final calendar draft so we can work around that, so.
Okay, so we got it, just okay?
No.
And one of the other things we've got to remember that Winter Squam has gotten the bond to add on and build, redo their technical center. So it's actually going to be, it used to be the agricultural center, it's going to be moving to the Winter Squam Regional Technical Center in which we will be sending students, obviously we have the ability to. Superintendent is working with the Winter Squam superintendent, they have been corresponding back and forth because they're going to do some precision manufacturing and cosmetology. Okay, so we're going to be able, all districts that go to Hewitt will also have the opportunity to attend these classes once the new technical center opens at Winter Squam. One of the things that we've been working on and having discussions with is that we may also be able to have the opportunity, because Winter Squam may not be able to write off, and we have the manufacturing blueprint classes that we teach here now through, you know, through the colleges and our own teachers, that we may be a receiving district for the other sending districts to come here to take the classroom portions of things and then take the practical in Winter Squam. So that is still in the preliminary, the, both Dan and Sharon over in, Shannon, over in Winter Squam have been working with one another to kind of figure out logistics and everything on this, so. All right, are there any questions on agreement or anything? It's pretty cut and dry, we'll, as I said, we'll continue. The big thing I do, we just need the approval of the regional agreement and the approval for that you authorize me to sign off on it.
Make a motion to allow Tim to sign the Hewitt Technical Center Regional Agreement.
Motion's been made by Deb, second by Liz. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor of the motion, please signify by saying aye. Opposed? I will be abstaining from the vote, obviously, because I signed off on it, so. All right, motion passes.
Okay, wanted to give you a quick seasonal health update. So we are in the cold and flu season. We have seen some situations already. The nurses have put out to staff and to families all the preventative type things that we typically would put out this time of year. We did have a COVID situation at the middle school where we had a lot of staff who passed it around to each other, so we've already gone through that. I'll remind the board this year that we don't have any MOA regarding COVID anymore, that all the things that we've done in the past have gone by the wayside. But we are still trying to do all that we can to try and keep kids and staff as healthy as possible as we head into this season. So we'll keep you up to date on all of that. Want to give you guys all a shout out and thank you for the Festival of Trees gift certificates that everybody's brought in. The admin team's brought them in as well. We're going to have a wonderful display. And Liz, thank you so much for bringing your tree in. We'll get some SAU staff to set that up.
Just, she needs to blow it up.
Yeah. Jewel, I think Jewel dropped off the signup sheet and we'll get some, like I said, SAU staff to go set it up and we'll be ready to go for that. So thank you, everybody, for doing that.
Can we just, Jewel, can you just give the dates and where this is going to be held and what the money goes for, for this?
Yeah, it's, sure. It's.
December 1st.
Right, December.
It gets December 1st, right?
Yeah, it does. I'm just trying to make sure I give you the specific times because it's at the Unitarian Church this year, so it's not quite the same. So it's December 1st, 4 to 8, and then it's Saturday, the 2nd, 10 to 6, 10 a.m. to 6 p.m. And then Sunday, the 3rd, it's 12 to 3 because they have to do it, obviously, after church service. And then the drawing of the trees happens after 3 o'clock on Sunday, the 3rd. All the money goes towards the Opera House. So the trees are at the Unitarian Universal Church, which is the one right by Peabody Place. So I just wanted to make sure I had the times right because the times are very different than what we normally do.
Right, so yeah, we'll have a proud showing there, thanks to all of you guys, so thanks for that. And then I just wanted to talk briefly about our December 18th board meeting. We typically will break bread together at 5:00 on the 18th. So if you could clear your schedules, Brenda and her crew from Food Service will be providing a nice meal for all of us and the full admin team will be here as well. We'll do that at 5:00 and then our meeting will not start until 6:30. So we have plenty of time to enjoy each other's company and celebrate another year. So if you can just do what you can to be here by 5, that would be wonderful. And that's all I have under my regular report.
Any questions for Dan?
Yeah, we had, there's a athletic list in the drive. We did not nominate the winter coaches.
Yep, I was going to do that under late items.
Oh, okay.
I didn't get it on the agenda, so.
Any other, any questions, other questions for, on Dan's report? All right, we'll move on to Agenda Item 14, which is our late items. I know we have a couple, so I'll turn it back over to Dan.
All right, so I'd like to nominate the coaches at the Franklin Middle School, the winter coaches. I just define them in my packet.
Did you say the middle school? I make a motion to approve the coaches at the middle school as presented.
Second.
Okay, motion been made to accept the middle school coaches as was presented by Athletic Director, second by Delaney. Any discussion? Seeing no discussion, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstentions? The ayes have it, the motion passes.
And I'd like to nominate our Franklin High School winter coaches.
I need a motion on that.
Move to accept the nominations for winter, I'd like to put you in the high school admin.
Motion been made by Delaney to accept the winter high school coaches as was presented. Do I have a second? Second by Delaney, I mean by Desiree. First by Delaney, second by Desiree. Any discussion?
I have one question.
One question.
Is it because practice was popular in basketball or because the coaches knew that the head varsity indoor track amount is significantly lower than the other head varsity?
I think it's the amount of time. They don't have as many meets and games, so they're not putting in as many hours.
It's a combination of both, actually, Liz, yeah.
Okay.
I have it in front of me now.
Good, but I just wanted to check.
Yeah.
Any other discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, please signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed? Abstentions? One abstention. The ayes have it, the motion passes.
Okay, and I have one more late item. You may have heard that the presidential primary has finally been set and it was set for Tuesday, January 23rd. So I had given you a calendar when we were in our meeting before. We had, non, sorry, we had an in-service day scheduled for Friday, January 26th that week. So I met with the administrators and I met with the union president and we all agreed what we would like to do because the schools are used for voting. We would like to move the Friday in-service day that week to the Tuesday, the 23rd, which is the day of the primary. So there'd be no school for the students on Tuesday, the 23rd. Teachers would have an in-service day, which is what we typically would do. We'll change that Friday to a regular school day for everybody, so there'll be school on the 26th. On this calendar, we knew that primary day was coming, so we had put 181 days on the calendar, so what will actually happen is the last day of school will be backed up one day to now be Tuesday, June 18th, which allows us potentially to have three snow days this winter and still get out of school by the 21st of June, which is a lot better than what we were looking at last year. So I just need the board to approve these changes so that I can, after Thanksgiving break, get this new calendar together and communicate it out to staff and to all of our families. And I could take any questions about that, if anybody has questions about the logistic logic around the changes that I just described.
I'll make a motion that we accept the amended 23, 24 school calendar as presented by the superintendent. Second by Delaney. Any discussion? Seeing no discussion, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstentions? The ayes have it, the motion passes.
And thank you, and that's all I have for now.
Can I throw in one thing?
You certainly may.
One thing, since we don't do our reports anymore, I just want to make sure, because Cadence jipped herself because when she did her report, because she didn't mention this. Well, I don't get to, I don't do a report anymore, so I figured that's what you thought. But I just want to make sure, since this is going to happen before the board meets again, that the board knows, and there's flyers here with a QR code to make it really easy, but the Adams family does go up December 8th, 9th, and 10th. It does feature lovely people like Cadence, our school board rep, like the lovely Leah Cody that was here earlier tonight, and about 30 other high school students, not to mention about 30 other community members, city council members, faculty members. There are about 70 community members and high school kids working together on this project between the cast and crew, all squeezing onto the middle school stage. So if you want to see how creative people in the arts can get, you really need to come check out how we go back to our roots 30 years ago before the Opera House and see how we tackle going back to no lights, no, well, we'll have all of it, but yeah, putting it in the middle school's been a challenge. So I hope that everybody can come and support the kids and the community. December 8th, 9th, or 10th? Yeah. There already are.
Oh, yeah. They are definitely on sale. Somebody might have had theirs five minutes after they went on sale. Thanks, Jewel.
Yes.
All right, Agenda Item 15 is our policy. We're going to go through our first reading first. Remember, this is just first reading and it'll be on for second reading and approval 30 days from now. So December 18th, these first reading policies will come back to us. I'll give you an opportunity to review those policies, break down any questions you may have, and then we'll have second reading and approval 30 days from now. So first reading only.
I'll make a motion to approve the first reading. ACN, nursing mothers accommodations, BEDG, meeting minutes, DFGA, crowdfunding, EBCC, fossilized spawn, active shooter, and other such threats, FA, facilities development goals, preparation of capital improvement plan, FAA, annual facility plan, and unused district property.
All right, so Deb's made the motion to accept the first reading, those policies. Do I have a second? Second by Liz. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor for first reading, please signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed? Abstentions? The ayes have it, it passes for first reading.
I make a motion for the second reading of EFAA mail charging.
Motion made by Deb to accept for second reading and approval, policy EFAA mail charging. Do I have a second? Second by Liz. Is there any discussion? Go ahead, Desiree.
Just don't like this one. I have a few questions because I discussed it at great length with many people. And the biggest one is why, well, not, I've got a lot of questions, but why? Because this is new, right? Like this would be, we're newly implementing it. So like, why are we implementing it? Because we, I don't see that we need it. It is required.
Required by law.
I thought it wasn't required.
It is.
I don't, are we allowed to amend it? Because I think we're going to have a lot of pushback for that assessment for neglect reporting. I do. So is that possible? Has anybody else? I talked to probably close to 50 parents separately, not even together, about it, to ask their opinion and from, like, many different, how would you call it, economic levels? Yeah, and they, not one person, and I actually had it, not one person was for it because we are already mandated reporters, so, and I feel like mixing water, it's like water and oil when you're mixing money and ethics. It doesn't make sense because it also opens us up to liability. And has the New Hampshire School Board any experience with any, like, how, when, all right, this is better. How, when was the last time? When was the first time this was implemented? Do you, do you know?
No, I don't.
Because it's fairly new.
USDA ruling that says no later than July 2017, all schools and authorities operating federal school community program are required to have a real charge policy, a real charge policy. So this is, this is guided, that's under the federal law.
Okay, so, but does the federal law require this language? Like this exact language? Or is, whose language is this?
You're under assessment for neglect reporting, right?
Yeah.
There's an RSA reference.
I read that. It's just mandated reporting. It's literally just says who, like physicians, doctors, like school officials.
There is an RSA, that's 169C that's cited in the law.
Right, I read that. Like, I went through this with many people, all facets of it, so that's why we, I feel like we are opening ourselves up to liability. And I'll just explain briefly, like, many people, we would have to educate people because in the language here, it says that, like, the parental restrictions. Parents are responsible for establishing with their student any restrictions the parent chooses to place on the account. So that leaves a lot open. Is that at home or within the school, lunch software, the restrictions? Like, it sounds like we are responsible, we are making the parent responsible for the student choosing their lunch. Because many people say, I send my child with a lunch and then I end up with a bill that comes to me and I didn't even know. Because what, what are we going to do on our half that says, no, your mom said no? Because how many kids? That was, one mom said, her kids are, she has two girls and I think they're probably in the middle school. And she said, well, I send them with a lunch, but they like whatever's there. And she does pay it, but she doesn't pay it right away because she doesn't even know and then she gets a notice. But how many, what if people don't know and then it runs up this huge bill? I don't think that language is friendly for the people that we're representing, which are our constituents. I would like to know if this language is required or recommended.
Desiree, what language specifically you're talking about?
The one I'm talking about is.
It's at the bottom of page 1. Restriction used as first sentence.
So, do you want me to read it?
No.
Okay. So I asked Jefferson about it. So I asked Jefferson about it, and I didn't realize, I had a couple calling, because I was like, I haven't heard from him, and he was injured, so I do apologize. But I, my, so I had said, my objective, my objective is to determine if there's ever been an occasion the city or the school budget has had to absorb the cost of unpaid meals. And he did send me, like, there are balance histories, because I asked for the balance histories, and they do trend upwards. But someone has always...
I don't think they have trended upwards, it was just this last year that it trended upwards.
Right, right.
Everybody was used to having free meals, and then we went to a non-free meal situation, so people were less inclined to pay for meals that their children were taking, and every district in the state was recognizing that situation.
Right.
Nationally recognized that that was an issue, that's why they're always pushing so much, like, to actually bring out and reestablish, preferably universal free meals throughout the country.
Right, which would be fantastic, we wouldn't need this, because I feel like we already, if something like that were to happen, and right now we are all experiencing hardship due to rise, you know, this inflation and rising costs, utilities, everything. So we're going to be imposing a policy that has some serious teeth on people who are already experiencing hardship, and that has not worked for the benefit of my constituents, at least, that I spoke to, and some who were former teachers. This did not go over well in the community, and I went out to see, not one person, and usually I get a couple people that say, Desiree, you're a little too much, but not one person said that, because we haven't, this community, I think, may be a little different, and that might be going, that might change going forward, but so far, people are dying to contribute and donate. So this might be mandatory, but I'd like to know if we can change some of that wording, because I don't think that reporting someone who's already experiencing hardship is going to resolve the problem, I think it exposes us to liability, and I believe...
So Desiree, are you linking what's on page 1 to reporting parents? So basically, if a kid comes in...
Yeah, no, no, it's on page 2, I think.
So you're saying, like, if a parent doesn't know the kid's running up a bill, and they get a bill?
Yeah.
You're concerned about the school reporting them?
No, I'm saying, there are parents in different legal situations that I deal with regularly.
Yep.
That don't, may necessarily not know, due to different legal status between parents, guardians, foster parents, like, there are, there is definitely a breakdown in communication when you, and I'm talking about, like...
I guess, I'm trying, trying to see if you're linking, like, them running up a bill, and then the school reporting them as neglect.
I think, well, yes, that, yes, I am worried about that.
Because I think that's two different things, like...
Well, that's what I mean, this is not a...
I don't, I don't know that that links those two together, is my point.
Well...
Like, yeah, you're responsible for your bill, but if they see the neglectful behavior on the part of the parent?
Right, you would, right.
Which doesn't say you didn't pay, you know, necessarily, like, your kid ran up a bill, we didn't know about it, doesn't necessarily mean you're going to get reported to the state.
Well, no, because it says here, if a student who has been determined to be ineligible for free or reduced cost meals, or whose parents have refused to cooperate with filing an application for free or reduced cost meals, is consistently not provided with meals, either through a meal center or a home, like, this right there, that language right there is not good, because there are, we are making a judgment that they are not cooperating, but perhaps they're not allowed to cooperate. But there are a lot of legal situations that I feel like this sentence does not incorporate.
But for the betterment of the child, you shouldn't, I feel like if nobody is responsible for ensuring the child is fed, I think...
But I don't think you should be. No, no, but I feel like we would get to that far before that, because we're mandated reporters, which is what the RSA 169C 29 through 31 is, that's just defining what a mandated reporter is, we are all mandated reporters. So I feel like this, I know that this would create, it could have a disastrous effect on a family unintentionally, and I know that it's at the discretion of, but somebody might look at it as appearing uncooperative, but in reality, they're not able to cooperate, they don't have the legal status, because there's like a guardianship, and things fall between the cracks every single day because of paperwork.
But doesn't that then help those things?
No. It could really...
I feel like it helps call to light that, oh, hey, whoever we thought was responsible for doing this, like, is not happening, so I think it would open up that door to, okay, we need to get somebody else in this child's life who can be responsible.
But they might already be there. You could have, like, an ISO foster home, but they don't know, because mom over here, or dad over here is getting paperwork, and there's no contact, for whatever reason.
We also need to remember, when it comes to foster children, they automatically qualify under federal law for the free lunch.
I get that.
And so when we, when you mention foster, I don't want people getting confused, they can add, foster kids aren't getting it, because that's not true, because it's automatic under federal law.
I get that, but there, there could be a period of time where there is a foster, they are received, they don't run up a bill, and then that status changes, because guardianship statuses change every day, constantly, they can change weekly, monthly, so this doesn't really support that, and that, I would like to know how long this has been in effect in certain areas, and if it has been challenged yet, because I feel like this will be challenged.
I also, I just, just linguistically want to point out that it doesn't say at any point that if, if this happens, that a report will be filed. It says that if it happens, the food service director and principal will assess whether a report is warranted. So it's not even, it's not even stated as, like, it's in the vague realm of possibility, but it's not, it's not there to be like, this is exactly what we're going to do the second, like...
Right. Well, that's the whole, this whole document is vague, to be honest with you, there is no, and I don't...
Can I speak to that real quick?
Yeah.
So any DCYF report in Franklin School District comes to me, and I would concur with what Liz said, it doesn't say it will be reported, it says will be assessed to be reported. I can tell you, in nine years, this has never happened. Unequivocally, I get every report that comes through this district, unequivocally, this has never happened in this district. In nine years I've been here, have we ever had to call anyone on this situation?
In that way...
Because that's not how we would handle it.
So it's not vague?
Just so you know, I mean, to reassure you.
It's specifically written and designed to be applicable and to everybody in the district, so by being purposefully open, it gives the people, before it gets to that level, it gives them the chance to actually intervene prior to it doing that.
It's still subjective, though.
And that, that's, that's good.
See, I don't like that. I don't think, if in nine years, that it has never occurred, I don't understand why we would need to have that, I just, I...
I just want to make one comment, the way the, it starts off is the parents that have to establish the account to and monitor what their child does, they're putting that emphasis on the parent's responsibility. So if the parent doesn't give a restriction for it, then the student is allowed to purchase whatever, and it's the parent's responsibility to monitor the account if they've set it up.
Right.
So with that said, I call the question.
All right, so the question's been called, no more discussion can be done, a vote needs to be taken on. This motion has been set forward, okay? So based upon that, all in favor of the motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed?
I oppose this.
Abstentions? The ayes have it, the motion passes. All right, that'll close up Agenda Item 15, we'll go to Agenda Item 16, public participation. Again, this is a second public participation that I allow at the board meetings. Again, if you would like to address the school board with any, with any subject, you may do so, I just ask that you just state your name, what ward you represent, I ask that you keep your comments to three minutes, and again, I don't give any more than 30 minutes to this session. Is there any from the public who would like to address the school board? Seeing none, I will close that portion of my meeting. Agenda Item 17's a non-public session, superintendent, do we have any non-public this evening? Okay, that'll take that, I will now entertain a motion to adjourn. So move by Delaney, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Lori, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, abstentions, the ayes have it, the motion, the school board is adjourned at 8:00.